We'll be, call the main order and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is the time for invitation for any citizen to be put time on the agenda and see no one in the audience. Before I ask for approval of the agenda, there's a couple items, okay? We're gonna add Friday's minutes, which are laying down in front of you, to the consent agenda. And we'd like to, anyway. And removal of C. under item seven for a rescheduled visit from Ken McFarland. In regular business, A., we've already approved that, so we're gonna move that up into the reports section. When Vicki gets up, she'll add the investment portion of that, because there won't be anything to vote on there, okay? And then there'll be a couple other, no changes, other changes to the agenda, just additional information. So, without objection, I'd like to accept the unanimous consent, okay? Approved, the consent agenda. Anything there with anybody? Okay, without objection, I'll accept the consent agenda unanimously. Routine business, approval of claims. Moved to approve, thank you, Miller, Krogman second. We have a new minute taker flying solo today, so it was good day for that to happen, since our other pilot is not feeling very well, so we'll move along.
I did set out in front of you the Department of Revenue claim information as well, I handed out this morning.
Okay. Any other question or discussion on the claims? Hearing none, I'll call the roll here.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Well, this comes our time that we meet South Dakota codified law to put Joyce on the hot seat. It's all warmed up for you. Can you put that? This is the time of the year that we will meet with her and discuss her performance. And, any comments from the commission? I think it's, where'd you put this? I read this yesterday.
Typically, what we do is just to be noted, you did her performance review along with the rest of the department heads at the beginning of the year. She received a satisfactory performance review, so this codified law just states that you have to hold this meeting the first Tuesday of April.
And does this meeting take action?
Yes.
No action. But we'd like to put it in the notes that she met with us in December, and she met to our satisfaction, okay? Jenna? Yes, Leanne?
And I know I've only been on the commission for three months, but I want to tell you that it appears to me you do an outstanding job, and thank you for your hard work.
She does do an outstanding job, it's a hard job, and she handles the public well, and I think she keeps us out of trouble.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you for that vote of confidence. With that being said, I have contacted the Department of Revenue. This has been on my agenda for two or three years, and I keep passing it off, but this law needs to be updated. It states that it's the first Tuesday in April, and all county commissions do not meet on the first Tuesday in April. For instance, last year, we did not. So, to be...
Legal?
Legal and follow the law, I am proposing to the Department of Revenue that they put this into legislation for 2016 and change it to the first meeting of April, and it should be an easy fix. And then we would be legal every time, so.
Since I read this yesterday, and that was a long time ago, are you on the go over our next meeting? That, how many we have?
I'll do that at department head.
Well, I was just wondering, where, that's, department heads are next, I just thought save you a trip.
Oh, do you want me to do it here?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, can I grab my?
No, you bring, okay, trying to save you a trip.
Okay, we're moving into department heads. County boards, today is the last day to file a written notice to appeal to county boards or to postmark, so we will be watching the mail. I am happy to say, as of this morning, we have no appeals. So, next Tuesday, if that holds true, we will meet at 8:30 as an equalization board. You will need to look at all the reports and approve tax exempt and all of those issues. And we do have four recommendations from our office, but no actual appeals, so that's next week. Last Wednesday, Bev and I both took part in an SDSU appraisal, ag land appraisal class that Jerry, that Larry Jensen does every other year, and it was held in this room. The students were quite impressed with our facility, I think they kind of got their eyes opened of county government a little bit. Bev and I did it along with Steve Minor from FSA and Ryan Forbes from NRCS. So, the four of us did a little bit of teaching, so. Legislation update, the one that we were watching, that the governor vetoed, and then the Senate took it back to override the veto, that it did not pass, so it is vetoed. And that was to allow for a new classification of property which would have been leased residential. And the promoters of that legislation were looking for numbers, so that if we classed leased residential would be, would be your rental apartments, houses, things like that. So, they wanted numbers. I think, long and short, eventually, they wanted a different tax levy, and we'll see this again, it's not going to go away. And it was close this year, very, very close, but the governor vetoed it, so, and he vetoed it. He just read my mind when he made his comments during his veto, so we agreed. Politically, that doesn't always happen, but I agreed with the governor on some of his thoughts. Our 2015 taxable factors have been approved by Department of Revenue. The ag factor will be .85, so what that means is if you have $100,000 worth of ag land, you will pay tax on 85,000. The non-ag factor is .941, and same scenario, $100,000 of non-ag property, you will pay tax on 94,100. That is up from 938 last year, so it's up just a little bit, but still remaining close, which is what we like, so. And I think that's it, any questions? Yes?
On the crop land, that's 85% of the productivity value, then?
The 100,000 example would be our value based on productivity.
And then on the non-ag, it's fair market?
Market value.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Vicki is okay with the commission, that we save her for last, is that okay? And then we'll just go right, Mike? I guess I'm skipping over you too, Bob, but. Huh?
Good morning. I guess a quick thing, I did go up on campus and look at the women's and uniform display that they had last month. It was kind of interesting, and I was, I was hoping they had a few there from the Vietnam era, but they didn't, so. I guess maybe that group is getting to be that age. The other thing is, I did go to the Military Veterans Affairs Committee yesterday, it was kind of a small turnout, but it was still fairly interesting. And we did discuss a few things at that one. I guess a lot of the questions were on how, how they determine service connection for different disabilities. And, and I think it turned out to be a pretty good discussion that we had. Now, as far as the traffic through our office, the last two weeks, we did have 134 calls in, made 160 calls out. We had 27 veterans stop in and 40 from the welfare, 44 from the welfare site stop in. Seeing somewhat of an upturn in that, since, as you know, my, my, the My Neighbor program didn't get as much funding as they had hoped. And it seems, it seems as if we're getting more people coming in, along with, in the wintertime, the disconnect notice, they give them an extra 30 days for disconnect during the wintertime, and then when spring rolls around, they take that away. So, a large number of people are hit with these additional electric bills, and they stop in to see us, and we are working with My Neighbor, Volunteers in Mercy, and ICAP, and hoping that we can get the funding from one of those other sources before they come to us.
Question? Okay. Perfect timing, Mike, I forgot to warn you that we have an 8:45, because I was thinking it was nine, and Commissioner Krogman reminded me that our state's attorney's on next, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't want to get in his way.
No, I don't.
It's not quite 8:45, but with everybody's permission, I would allow, or have our state's attorney come and address the commission.
Morning.
Morning.
I assume you've read the memorandum that's in your packet. We are seeking an additional dollar and a half, an hour compensation for our, our summer intern this summer, which I believe Brooke will be starting the second, second week in May, once law school is out at Vermillion. She was with us last summer, and that was between her first and second year in law school. This summer would be between her second and third year in law school. She also helped us out during the Christmas break. And with the additional experience she had from last year and this Christmas break, Abby and I really think that she should be entitled to a little more compensation. She'll be able to hit the ground running, because she knows what's expected of her, and she, she'll be able to do more this summer, too, than she was able to do last summer. After her second year, she can appear in court if one of us is, is there with her. So, I, I think the dollar and a half additional compensation is warranted, and I think that would be something slightly over $900 additionally that the expense would be for the summer, over the dollar, or over the $10.50 that she received last year. And that, I'm sure we can work into our, our budget. So, that's the request we're making, and she's a great girl and a really good assistant for what we need her for. Questions, I'd try and answer them.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Especially in light of the fact that you feel that you can absorb this into your budget, I wouldn't have a problem with this. However, my question would be, in the future, when you start over with a new one, are we gonna go back to the $10.50?
Well, I, I assume that would be where we would go back and, and start, unless some, something else is, is done. But the additional dollar and a half for this year is because of her experience and because it, she'll be a senior in law school this, this coming fall. So, she has the experience and the training, and we think she should have something more as compensation on what she received last summer.
Right, and I understand that, and I, I tend to agree. I just was wondering if you were thinking that that would be a permanent thing for the new interns when they come in? That's, that's what my question was.
That's not what we're counting, lady.
Okay.
If I could just add something to Commissioner Miller, you know, the request we're making today is strictly for this position for this summer. I believe in Stacy's Commission Assistant Report, she had made a reference to possibly considering the intern wages and other positions like that with our budget going forward. But for now, this is a one-time request, and we assume, unless things are changed overall with the budget, it would go back to the same rate next year.
Thank you.
I'm not opposed to the request, I just have a question. Been a long time since I was in law school, but I have also had interns over the years. Most of these positions, in my experience, are not paid. Is that something that's changing, then, in the, with law school students?
Can I answer that, Clyde?
Sure.
Just since I'm a fairly recent graduate from law school, some positions for internships for first-year students can be unpaid, some are paid. It just depends on the firm or the public sector that they'd be working for. The range on, at least the eastern side of the state, which I can speak to, is in the public sector, interns are making around the $15 range, and in the private sector, it's anywhere from 15 to 25 an hour.
And so, you're saying that all internships are being paid now?
Nope, I'm saying some are and some aren't, it just depends. But some students, if they can't find a paid internship, can elect to do unpaid internships where they get school credit. Just depends on what they can find for the summer.
And then would you anticipate that this person, then with their limited license, are, they, will she be handling, for example, class-two misdemeanors? What, what's going to be her job duties?
She certainly could. I, I would think that we would, or I would, would allow her to appear in court and handle court trials. We really don't have many preliminary hearings anymore, but we do have court trials on class-two misdemeanors, and she could certainly handle those.
And for my caseload on the juvenile and abuse and neglect and civil side, for the more basic hearings and appearances, I would be asking her to handle some of those as well.
Last summer, she worked with both of us, myself in criminal court and then Abby in juvenile court.
Any other questions by the commission?
I guess I feel with, it sounds like she has quite a bit of experience, and she well deserves the additional pay. I mean, even coming back just her second year.
Okay. Then I think we'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Moving to approve to raise the wage from $10.50 to $12. Any other question or discussion? Or you can then call the roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Let's see, 8:51, do we have a nine-minute presentation by somebody? Bev? And the, do you want, do you want the guys here already, you want to move up? What? We want to hear from Bev. Yeah, yeah.
Good morning. I definitely won't, won't take nine minutes, but it's kind of short. But I was just gonna comment that Joyce and I were able to speak to an SDSU appraisal class last Wednesday on April 1st. That went well, and we're starting to see some of the 30-plus students come through our office to do, do their research. So, that's, it's always nice to be able to help the students and, and learn, and they appreciate the opportunity to, to further their education in our offices, I guess. The other thing I wanted to comment or tell you about is I have set up demonstration with Tyler Tech. They have a real estate county land record process, a new program, it's called Document Pro. And they will be coming on the 23rd of April to demonstrate that. I have seen the demonstration at Workshop and Pier, but I've, I'm, I'm interested in it, but I'd like to have Tammy and Belinda see it, for one thing. Sean has agreed to sit in on it, and if any of you want to come and sit in for part of it or see some of it, I wanted to run that past you. Sean has been in contact with our ALKME, the scan program that we use for our documents. That, several years ago, was bought by another company, and it's my understanding that they will be in the future ending any support with ALKME. So, instead of waiting for that to happen, I want to get on the ball and find something that will suit our needs before it's completely an emergency situation.
Is that, is there a comparable cost with the ALKME and the Tyler?
That I don't know, but we'll be finding that all out with that demonstration. What I saw at Workshop was just kind of an overhaul of what it does, and I want to find out the cost in that. The cost would be, able to be taken out of that MyTech fund, so it wouldn't be any additional out of the budget at all.
Could you, for everybody listening, just tell us, just briefly what the program does, and then what time on the 23rd?
Okay, the, this program, right now, we have the INCODE program for basically our accounting part. We enter the documents, the information off the documents there, the cost of the document, the time and date of filing, that type of thing. This will do that same thing. It will also do this, when we scan our documents, it will go into this same program instead of having two programs. Another thing I want to know, this is by Tyler, which, as is our INCODE, and I want to make sure that, or find out how it interfaces with the INCODE that we've got presently, and that's why I'm glad Sean agreed that he will be there to, to talk to the representatives also. Now, we index our documents twice, because they're two different programs. With this, with one program, it will all be, it'll be indexed for both the accounting and the scanning part.
So, when you scan, it's indexed?
If, when we scan, it's all, that all goes over to the index, or the indexing that we've already done, when we get the document in, we'll go over to the scanning part of it, so that we can search that document. There's a, more ways of being able to search for the documents, too. You can search by legal description, which we can't on ALKME, and I think that's probably basically it, if you, if they know their legal description, because we, we can search by grant or grantee on ALKME, and we can search by book and page also, but.
What time on the 23rd?
They're going to do two of them, and I believe the first one will start at 8:30. They agreed to do two of them, because with three of us in the office, we've got to leave somebody in the office to, you know, so we all three can't be watching the, the presentation at the same time, so. But I will, I believe you meet again before that, and we'll, I'll have better idea of what time they will be here. Anything else?
Not I.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Bev. Now, we're down to a four-minute report. Anybody want to start real, oh, you're gonna try to jam this in four minutes? Okay. If not, we'll get you back.
They taught me in Missouri how to speak real fast. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. There's a siren test today at 1:00 PM, so you will hear the warning sirens going off. Management class will be in this room on April 9th. We do have a real good list of attendees planning on coming to the meeting. Next week, I'm in Sioux Falls at a South Dakota-North Dakota Pipeline Operators Training Conference, and I get to give a one-hour session on exercising. Mainly, they want to focus on my, my full-scale exercise that we had in 2013, that Commissioner Miller visited, and we'll show some of the tips that we did in the one back here, March 12th. April 17th, the Bruce is having a fire EMS feed. Spotter training, this year, we do not have the Weather Service coming to Brookings. Typically, we do it every other year, we rotate with Flandre. Flandre's having their spotter training April 22nd in their community center in Flandre. I'll be attending the Walk a Mile, May 1st, and I'll be gone from my office, May 1st through the 10th, on vacation. There is some ag issues popping up that we need to be aware of. The bird flu has been identified in Minnesota and South Dakota. It's been isolated, as we know of right now, so it's not, it's not an epidemic-type, pandemic-type thing. And they, yesterday, started reporting a case of glanders down on the Mexican border in the United States side. And glanders is a rare exotic, old-fashioned, World War I-type disease that if it, if it spreads, it could, it could do some damage, because there's not a lot of immunity to it, from what I'm understanding right now, and.
Is that one that spreads to people?
Pardon me?
That's, that's to people?
It can spread to people. Glanders is mainly in, in horses, livestock, that's how they used it in World War I, as a biological agent against animals. And then, but it is, it can be transmitted to humans also. Right now, it's only a one-isolated case down on the Mexican border, but it's something that the emergency management side feels we need to keep, start keeping an eye on in case something exotic starts happening, and we, it might be one of those. And the NACO conference is coming up, I understand later on, you guys will be discussing who's going to be attending that. I just need to know if somebody is attending, so if I'm going to attend, it is in my budget to attend, and right now, it's, it's the time to start making reservations for that particular conference, if people's gonna go. And last but not least, since I got, what, one, two minutes left, our backup emergency operations center has finally started to shape up. Our main emergency operations center, and I guess sometime we'll have to meet, I'll have to take the commission to the E. emergency operations center to show you what we got over at the police station in the basement, where our backup E. O., main backup EOC is the sheriff's office. And mainly, that's because of the large generators, where we can operate 24 hours a day if we lose power. And that's a 16-by-30-foot carpeted room. I do have a projector in my office that we're gonna put down there. Internet is available in the room. We are going to have some additional expenses that I'm gonna look at my budget and work with the sheriff on, and we may have to come, request a little bit from the building fund. It looks like we're gonna need two to four new electrical outlets and probably an additional phone line. They've got an old phone line in there, but we're gonna need another phone line for the EOC, so we can call out during emergencies. And I believe they are set up for radio communications, we may have to go upstairs to do it, but law enforcement's got plenty of radios over in that area, I do believe. And that's just a quick update, any questions? The rest of this stuff's written in my staff report tonight. We got a zoning meeting tonight, and.
Very good, we'll be, Commissioner Jensen will be visiting about the south drainage, and you'll be over there to chime in.
Yep, I did mention that, we, yep, yep.
We'll, we'll get to that in a little more depth.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, okay, nine o'clock, and we have scheduled Doug Tonamacher and spectometry, is that correct?
I have to give you credit. My wife took my name and she says it about as well as you do.
Usually I butcher the English language.
Oh, you did very well. I gotta, like I said, you did very well. So, yeah, Doug Tonamaker. So, good morning. Got some things I need to... Who's going to take a minute? Does it feed through? I got to apologize, first of all, to the commissioners here. What date was I supposed to be here last? It was March, something like that. I was about 80 miles from town to meet with you one morning, about a month, about a month ago. I'm a pilot and I ran into some problems because I was landing in Brookings and had to come back, had to go back, turn around and go back home. So apologize for, you know, not showing up that day. So I really apologize for that. It was one of those things where the, ran into some ice as I was coming to land and the little Cessna 172 doesn't handle ice very well. So I, again, I want to apologize for that. But I wanted to talk with you a little bit. If you don't, those of you that don't, don't... You're not knowing me, I'm the South Dakota County District Manager. We've worked with Brookings County now for, boy, it's gone six years, seven years or so. And so, and I'm sure most of you are familiar with the Schneider Beacon web portal that the county uses. So I'm not sure, I'm going to...
Can everybody hear, or do you want him to sit by the mic?
Do I need to sit down?
Yeah, oh, this is being recorded.
Yep.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, let me go ahead and, so I need to sit down? I can't walk, I can't be walking around. I'm not a guy that likes to sit down. So, but if I can't, if I can't walk around, I'll survive, but that's fine, that's fine. I think you're fine, I just don't know about working...
For people at home.
Yeah.
It's pretty quiet at Little High. So I need, so I should sit down?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. And I'll go ahead. Okay. Are we okay? Is this good? Okay. Also, I'm also a history buff, okay? And I ask permission if I could set, to share this with you. Anyone ever heard of the Harrison-Cullen Act of 1933? It's the date, or it's the act that ended prohibition, 83 years ago today is the, was when prohibition ended. So it's affectionately called National Beer Day, April 7th. So put that on the record, everybody at home and stuff. So there you go. Anywho, yeah, so Pictometry and is the, is the company that Brookings County has contracted with for years to fly and image the county. And that imagery, that if you're familiar with the Schneider Beacon website, all that imagery that is on there is from Pictometry. So I'm showing you the Beacon website now. And then if you go to the map tab on, on the Beacon website, you'll see that imagery, which was last captured in the spring of 2013. The first project was done in the spring of 2010. And the next project is scheduled for spring of 2016. So the county's on a three-year cycle for imagery from Pictometry. Now, the big thing about Pictometry is aerial imagery traditionally is captured in a straight-down rooftop perspective. I'm going to just zoom down here into Brookings County or City of Brookings here. I don't, I'm not sure where I'm going, but I'm just going to drill on down there. And you'll notice as I get closer to the ground, the imagery starts and see new mapping layers and stuff like this show up. But it's in a perspective that's straight-down rooftop. On this property here, as soon as you see the roof of buildings, which isn't a very natural-looking perspective as you, as you can see. However, if I look on the, take this little button there and click on, click on the map here, you'll be able to get a more natural-looking perspective of any property. It's going to be an oblique image or a three-dimensional image that isn't working right now, apparently. It was working not five seconds ago. Let's try this one more time. Or I'll just go to the Pictometry website. There you go. How's that? So that's the three, that's the three-dimensional imagery that Pictometry is known for. Every, all, every building in the county is captured in three dimensions from all four directions. And you'll, and users are able to measure on this imagery as well. And again, this is the new building as of 2013. And if I go to the first flight, the first project that we did back in 2010, this is what it looked like in the spot that we are at right now. So it's like a nice little record of how things change over time. So I did, I ran a little report and since everything's gone online now, over about a year or so ago, there's been over 7,000 image loads by Brookings County employees and officials and city officials of Brookings and various cities. 7,000 image loads just from the Pictometry online website, as you see here. That does not count for all the image loads that are on the Beacon website, mobile. There's also mobile applications for iPad, Android, iPhone, stuff like that. So there's just a, there's a very good usage of the technology here in the county, and that's good to see. Like I mentioned, that the spring 2016 flight, that's when the county is next scheduled. However, it doesn't automatically happen. We do need some sort of official notification from the county that you do indeed wish to have that project done. It does not, like I said, doesn't happen automatically. And a simple email to me will, will take, will do that. So again, sometime between now and I would say the end of the year, we'll need some sort of notification from the county if you do indeed want that flight. And I'll show you this, this is pretty cool. We have 79 airplanes in our fleet. And this is a live map of where those aircraft are located right now. And if it's a blue dot with three letters or numbers, that's an airplane. You can notice where those airplanes are at right now, pretty much on the north-central Great Lakes area. I handle the states of South Dakota, Nebraska, and Iowa. And we had over 30 county projects to fly in the spring of 15 this year. And we about finished up in, in South Dakota, Nebraska, and Iowa. So I wanted to come up here today and introduce myself to you, and there's been, there's been some new faces on the board here, and take any of your questions and whatnot and go from there.
Questions from the commission?
Cost-wise, will you be sending us a cost plan?
Yep. The county has a two-flight, six-year contract that the county has signed three years ago for the two flights. And the cost is roughly about $30,000 a year for the six years. So we're just finishing up that. I don't handle the finances as far as, you know, when payments are in, but it's usually the cost of the project are divided over three budget years.
Okay, so the extra flight is already included in the contract and that kind of stuff, so there's not additional funds?
It's, it's already in the contract, but like I said, if you don't notify me that you actually want that second flight, even though it's in the contract, then obviously we're not going to do the project and therefore you're not going to get a bill. Yeah. So it's, that two-flight agreement allows you to, for six years, know the budgetary amount that would be needed for two flights over six years.
Very good. Stacy wrote it down. I saw her writing it down, so she'll have it on her agenda for a future meeting. Any other questions?
I think, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that some of those costs are shared with the city. And it, at one point, I think E911 was sharing some too, but I don't know if they still do or not. So it isn't, it's not fully taxed to the, to the county. We do have partners in this. I know at one point BEDC was in, I think they might not be anymore. But, but we do have some partners, so it's not, that whole amount isn't taxed to the county. I just wanted to make that clear for the listening audience.
Thank you. That was an excellent point. Any other questions? Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
Thanks for flying up.
Enjoy your National Beer Day. So, oh, yeah, you're welcome.
Yes, yeah. We're going to talk liquor licenses later, but liquor came later. That was another act that it took a while for the country to warm up to alcohol. Our next is not till 10, so let's go back to department head reports. And see, Marty.
Morning. I don't have a lot. Just a quick update in the jail. Got 27 inmates, 14 on work release, five females, eight males. Got 50 on 24/7. And they come in twice a day. Scram, 17. And one drug, there are three drug patches and one interlock. The big thing this week is we have Wednesday, Thursday, Brookings County is hosting a two-day training here. We'll be in the community room. There'll be 25 officers throughout the region coming in for a search and seizure class. Don McCray, who is a part-time deputy for me, and Tom knows Don. Don was a long-time game warden in Brookings County, and then he got transferred to Pier and he retired, and now he works for the State Academy in Pier at the Training Center. And he's conducting this, and he does a great job with that. So, and then, so we have 25 coming in on Thurs, or on Wednesday, and then there's 18 for another class on Thursday. So there'll be quite a group of people up here. So that, and he does a great job with that search and seizure and warrants and things like that. And it's something that's always, seems like there's always questions when we, when we go to court. That's the big thing, is defense attorneys try to suppress the evidence because of your search warrant or the way you seized the evidence. So it's, it's important to have these classes and keep us updated on that. Other than that, we got a little moisture out there that's probably going to help us with our, you know, but it's still not enough. So I appreciate you guys going into the fire band and so forth. Friday, there was a pickup that burnt up by the, by the river south of town. It got stuck and then started, started the grass on fire and stuff. And then they had another fire by Campbell on Saturday too. But, you know, so far it's been good. I mean, the area towns have been busy in the areas, but it could be worse. The other, other counties have had worse. So hopefully we'll get a little moisture. Other than that, that's all I got. If you have questions.
Questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I've seen Don McCray's YouTube of his training, pretty wild. Don's very enthusiastic. Welcome, Dick.
Morning. I've got a few items here of importance. The two-box culverts scheduled for construction this summer. We ran into a slight snag on those because they were built prior to 1945. And so the Corps of Engineers informed us that we were going to be required to make a report of historical significance. And so we got to hire an anthropologist to look through and see how significant those bridges are. I hope they, I just hope some past president didn't pheasant hunt or shoot something off that bridge. That would be the only snag. But it will kind of coincide with my planning for this future transportation plan and stuff. I'm going to sort through the Excel file and sort out these ones. So if, if one of them is scheduled, we'll take this into account because it isn't something that requires us or Banner to do. You just contact, like, we contacted the two in Huron yesterday, so hopefully they're not too busy and they can get that done for us. But anyway, it's just another, the more you think you got them figured out, the more they crank it the wrong way. So, but the reason we're getting started on that, and the boxes are being built already in Mitchell, construction is scheduled for late July or early August, which should be as dry as it is, a very good time to get it done in a, in a quick fashion. And so I've started to communicate with adjoining landowners and letting them know what's going on and keeping them in the loop so that they're aware of when it could take place. Also, a notice to proceed was sent out by the state DOT to Pron Construction that'll be building the bridge out by the Gun Range, mile north of the Gun Range exactly. And so I contacted Matt Pron, who's the president of that company, and he thought that they probably wouldn't start until early September or October. But everything's set to go and as it gets closer, the ball should move ahead without any other delays. And then today at 1:30, we have a meeting at CDI on, to discuss some of the utilities that are on 213th Street, which will probably be impacted by the Novita Road project. And at 2:00 PM is our bid opening for the 34th Avenue project, which is hopefully going to come out favorable. And then I have not yet received any further instructions or information on that grant for 468th Avenue for Northern Sky Dairy. Or I have not heard back from the Safety Evaluation Committee that's coming, or hopefully in the near future, to Highway 11 North of Sinai to see what they would suggest as far as options to make it safer. We started our 10-hour days yesterday. We also had Swift Tel come and modify our phone system so that we can not only forward calls within the system, we can also forward to a cell phone. And we also talked with Stacy, and she has been so kind as to offer Michelle services that we could forward the calls to her, the routine ones. We've got a list that I'm going to make sure that all of you also get, which are contact numbers and the priority that, that you could get ahold of somebody if there is an emergency. So I think we've got a pretty good grip on what's going on and, and we're still crack-filling till they close themselves up. But I think for the most part, we're having a terrific spring. Sometimes no moisture is good, but in other areas it, it's not so good. So, any questions?
Questions, Commissioner?
Have you seen any frost damage at all? I mean, the frost is pretty much out.
Not yet. I mean, there's some places that, where it'd been alligator previously that maybe looks a little bit different, but nothing as far as a frost boil or big breakups.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to decorate, the sign crews are there out right now.
Yeah, they moved in, Joe Hamm moved in, and they've started on some of the townships. They've also been doing, as they go in the same area, all they've got left for us to do is the bridge markers and delineators. So they're doing that as they go by for the township roads. They've also started installing the 911 signs, which we want them to change and put them back where they were before, simply because it's a visibility issue. And I don't think I've got to get back to him and see, but he didn't see any problem with doing that. So I don't know why they thought that would be a better place to put them, but anyway. And then he's got quite a crew here, so it isn't going to take them very long. Geez, I think they've got close to seven crews going out, so. And so they'll also pull all the posts. I know that was a big question. The board was getting quite off on this winter was, why are those old posts still there? So.
Any other questions?
How are we coming on the space for Gary?
The space for what?
Gary. Weed, the weed department.
Oh.
Yeah.
I haven't, I've talked to Gary and he wasn't in any sort of a hurry. And I thought since we're going to get somebody new, I can, I can move it forward, but I thought a new person might not. I guess Gary's very easygoing and very flexible, so I'm not too concerned about him, but if we got somebody in there that might be a little more, in, well, they've got a certain style they like or whatever, then I guess I'll work with them. But I think we're most likely going to go on... But I think we're most likely going to go on the south side of my office wing there and just 18 by 28. And it'll, if it meets everybody's needs and they got room to meet, I think that'd be our best bang for our buck. So.
Very good. And that was something, I was, if we get to our work plan ever, because we left it with a building outside and all kinds of things, and we have visited about cheaper alternatives, but thanks for staying ahead of that.
Sure.
And we'll keep you, I guess we got our new person hired, and we'll be discussing that, but I think your suggestions, when you come and talk about bridges and everything else during a work session, we'll touch everything else there.
Okay.
I guess I just want to thank you. I know that you're a transportation person, now you're a communication person and telephone, and, and thanks for taking the commission's concerns over communication for our public and staying in touch with, with your office. So thank you for getting that taken care of.
You're welcome.
Okay. Hello, Vicki.
Good morning. You should have received in your packets, first of all, the annual report that is something that is done annually, and it's the combination of all of the assets, liabilities, and all of the numbers for the entire county for the year. So it's all compiled into these four exhibits that we included. It has been published in the paper. It has to be published in March. It was published in all the legal newspapers. And our book with the annual report is much larger than this, but this is a condensed version. And if you saw it in the paper, that is even more condensed. It's just an overview of the entire financial report. And I don't know if anybody's looked at it, if they have any questions, or if you want to stop down and see the whole thing with the different exhibits and the different reports. It's kind of a combined effort with the whole office. Some do their parts of it, and it all gets combined into one report. So.
Questions on this portion of it? I'm going to ask a couple stupid questions, okay? Page 63, Stacy, can you? Let's see, what is indirect, let's see, where is indirect interest expense? I'm only used to direct interest expense. It's in the box. There's an asterisk. On the bottom, there's 102,000. It's interest on long-term debt. But the county doesn't have, what's that mean? I guess I-
Interest on long-term debt?
Yeah, and then it has an asterisk, and down below it says, "We don't have interest expense related to functions presented above." It includes indirect interest expense. What, what's an indirect?
That is what, you know, with the courthouse building, and it is what we pay for the interest on that long-term debt.
But that, that's fine. And I guess sometime, why isn't it just above? Yeah, is this some kind of state law thing we don't have, and so you got to use a different word or something?
Right.
Okay. All right. A little different than business, a little more clear cut. And then page 71, let's see.
And I've got different page numbers, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm just going off and down, yeah. Down to the bottom, Stacy. Down to 720 and 700, yeah. On those funds there. Let's see, now is the, are some are restricted and some are assigned? Well, I'm sorry. Can I go back to 65 first? Then that leads to this, okay? What's the difference between restricted and assigned legally, I guess? If it's restricted, you just never touch it. If it's assigned, you can move it around.
Right. Restricted is, you know, like we have the snow removal out in the highway department. That's restricted, and it can only be used for that. And assigned is something that you can assign to different funds, and you can reassign it and to a different fund. It isn't something that has to be used for that.
Restricted, what Rod would often say is restricted means it's restricted by an outside source other than the county. So it's by, like, by state statute requires you to spend those dollars.
Like the highway dollars they're talking about. They come restricted.
Assigned is, is what you do as a board, for instance, with your fund balance. It's an assignment by the commission. And that just takes just a general motion by the board to assign or unassigned dollars.
All right. Now, very good. And that probably was a stupid question. Should have been answered a long time ago for me. 71 now. Let's see, down there at the bottom, 70720. Now these, Urban Development, that's the planning and zoning. You run that by me, these funds, these separate funds.
That function line, 711, is the planning and zoning budget line. And I think we're looking at expenses here. Yes.
And then seven, the first-
712 is our payment to First District Association that we make each year.
Yeah. Gotcha.
The 65 is for BEDC Growth Partnership. That's, that's our, our economic development fund, and that's the expense. These are all of the expenses that we saw in those individual budgets in 2014.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Expense budgets, yes.
Okay. Now, I guess we'll go to the, well, is there any other questions concerning that annual report? Thank you. What were we going to talk about? Oh, the investments, yeah.
Yeah, you should have received also in your packet the investment report that shows all of the different monies that we have invested in the county. And kind of to start, we first send out a letter to find out how many loan dollars are in each different bank, and that is part of our investment policy. We find out how many loan dollars are in each different bank, and that's what it shows up there, the loan amount. And from there, we, we divide up and show what the percentage is. And then they, we take all of our money market accounts, and it's divided that way according to the loan dollar amount and the percentages. And then with CDs, we do that differently. That is offered to all county banks, whoever wants to invest in a CD. We used to have a lot of competition with those, but right now with the interest weight being so small, we really don't have anybody that really even cares if they have them. But there it gives the interest rate anywhere from .30 to .40 is what they have been. And we have 3,400,000 invested in CDs. And there it gives you the daily checking account balance and the refund checking account balance, and that's as of February 28th. And our money market interest rates of .11%. And that is anybody that has the money markets, they have to pay that interest rate. It's part of our investment policy. So. Any questions on that?
Do we negotiate at all with the banks on the CD rates?
We do. Anytime a CD comes due, we get at least three quotes, and the highest is where it goes to. Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, Commissioner? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Vicki. I think everybody's had their spin up here. So I, we'll move on to regular business, and we have a different lettering system because we removed the first one. And so A will be approval agreement number 15-45, First Amendment, the Road Use Agreement between Brookings County, South Dakota, and Novita Aurora. Is there a motion to approve? Krogman, motion?
Second.
Second. Jensen. Okay. Discussion and then questions, comments, whatever.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
In working with Dick Burke, the Highway Superintendent, and Kerry Brech, and Rick Eggerberg from Novita, we came to the determination that with the final road surfacing, the paving being done in 2016, we would need to update our road use agreement, which had a final completion date that would coincide with the facility's final completion date. And since our final roadway will now not be completed until after the facility is completed, this is just an update reflecting that change. The meat or the substance of the amendment is referenced here in paragraph one. And this language has already been agreed to by Novita. Mr. Andreas has signed off on the document. And I noticed Rick's here, if you have any questions for him. But this language is something we worked on together, and I think all parties are comfortable with it.
Okay. I have visited with Kerry, and, and now the, once we get ready to let for bid, we have ending dates, but it doesn't preclude somebody from doing the whole thing, but that'll be in the same year. But that wouldn't make any difference to this agreement if it happened, because that's the same thing. It has an ending date, right? Most likely, it's going to be a two-phase, and preferably, probably, it'll be that way. But right now, unless the commissioners change it, the bid will have an ending date. Won't say it has to be done in two phases. So that's something to think about when Kerry comes, okay? Does that make any difference to you, Rick? Okay. Any other question or discussion?
I guess I have got one question on number eight on the agreement. It says, "User agrees to reimburse roadway authority for maintenance to or work done on alternate routes, including basic roadway, roadway repairs such as basic maintenance required of said alternate routes, with said reimbursement not to exceed 5,000." Is the alternate routes, what are alternate routes? Okay. And the limiting amount is $5,000 for repairs? Correct?
And that document, Commissioner Jensen, is the original road use agreement, so that's already been approved.
Yeah, actually, we're just voting on the amendment right now. Yes?
That's the date we were given by CDI in a-
Neither can I, but June 1st was brought up, and, and the people that deal with roads, it's- Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce? Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Item B, approval of abatement number 15-003. Application made by Dakota Homes LLC for parcel number 40970-11050-361-05, and the amount of $1,959.16 and 2,040, 46 cents. And Joyce is here to answer any questions, or it was in the packet, kind of the explanation, but yeah, thank you.
Second.
Pierce, Miller. Okay. And this good person to ask the questions to.
Well, after getting a satisfactory performance, heads up, I hate to come, I hate to come with these things. In the world of equalization and legal descriptions, Brookings County started out with all farmland. And Brookings City still has little pieces of farmland that's, it's what's remaining in a section. And the piece we're talking about today was 150 feet of farmland along 17th Street South, where the new townhouses were built. And we were assessing this remaining piece of farmland that was platted into a block, and the 150 feet didn't get removed from the assessment rolls. For those of you that went through county boards last year, we fixed this in 2014. So that's why we're not addressing 2014, but it's still hanging out there for 12 and 13. So this, and in my letter, I put amount to abate, this will probably be a refund, and an outside party has purchased, Vicki can maybe explain some of that, but an outside party has paid the taxes sitting out there on this piece, and she would like to get them taken care of off of her books, so.
Okay. Questions? No questions? I'm going to call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is C, approval of agreement number 15-46, South Dakota Department of Transportation Joint Powers Agreement for Weed Spraying Services, SDOT, Department of Transportation in Brookings County.
Motion approved.
Jensen, Miller. Question or discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item D, approval of resolution number 15-16, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one new 2016 tandem axle trucks, 64,000 gross vehicle. What does that stand for, Larry?
Gross vehicle, wait.
Yeah. And off the, of the Lake County, South Dakota's bid, and before, should we do, do we have a motion first?
What you have to, what you're going to have to amend?
Well, before you make a motion, we'd like, I'd like to have Abby say something, just so you know.
There needs to be an amendment to this document. This was an older form, and Dick and I have already talked about this, but the statute that's referenced in there has since been repealed, so it doesn't exist. So the statute that needs to be replaced in that language is SDCL 5-18A-22, and that should be done by amendment.
Okay, well, can we make, I, I didn't allow the motion to be made yet, so can they make the motion as a resolution's amended?
Someone needs to vote, make a motion to amend it, and then vote on the amendment motion, and then vote on the motion as amended.
I interrupted the resolution, so I was just thinking that they could make the motion as amended.
I'll move to amend it.
Okay.
That's-
I need the first, I need the first one up.
Ryan moved, I seconded already.
Moved and seconded. Krogman, Pierce. Well, I didn't recognize it, but I do now.
Are they moving the amendment?
So now, no, that's, that's just for the original motion. Okay, now the amendment, please.
Move to amend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moving seconded to amend the resolution to South Dakota Code Law 15-18. I didn't get that. Go ahead.
518A22.
1822, okay. And any question or discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
I say an aye. Yes, thank you. And now, back to the original motion that's been amended to approve the resolution for the purchase. Any question or discussion? Hearing none? All those that say aye in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All the same sign, motion carries. And from now on, for the rest of these, Jenna, these will be voice, unless I hear a nay, and then I'm going to call for the roll. E, approval agreement number 15-47, app- E, approval agreement number 15-47, application for occupancy of the right-of-way made by Kingbrook Rural Water System.
So moved.
Second.
Krogman, Jensen, discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. F, approval agreement number 15-48, an application for occupancy of right-of-way made by XL Energy.
So moved.
Krogman.
Second.
Miller, any question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. G, approve...
Make one comment, please.
Yes.
The, with XL Energy, if you noticed on the map, they have their own easement on each side of the road. So basically, where they're crossing our road is strictly overhead, and that's why I allowed him not to have to contact the adjoining landowners, because he's, they're already there.
Thank you for the clarification. If I get too, don't hesitate to interrupt me, okay? G, approval of agreement number 15-49, application for easement in county right-of-way made by Old Tree Farms. And...
I just wanted to note on these, the easement tenant hasn't signed them yet. They were notarized without the easement tenant's signature, so before they're, you can approve them today, but Jenna or someone should just note, they need to formally be signed and re-notarized by the easement tenant.
Also, if you want to, I don't think there's any real emergency. If you want to deny it, or take it off the, or table it, whatever would be the proper thing to do, I'll go out and visit with him and make sure we're all clear on what exactly he's doing.
Yeah, Dick, if you could get where he's going to establish the crossing, you know, a relative distance from the intersection, and brief diagram, I guess, kind of, we didn't have much here.
Was that a motion to table this item, with some agreement?
Is time in essence here, or...
He didn't seem to think so. He just had a kind of a, a little bit of a dilemma, because if, if he couldn't get it approved, then he was going to start using his big manure spreader, the tank thing, and he just says, you know, definitely having an impact on the roads. And I said, "Well, we've got weight limits," and he says, "Well, then I need one or the other." But I don't think it's the end of the world, I mean, he's just trying to...
I did receive a phone call from Hossel Township, and they were concerned if we could grant him as soon as possible, because Township was kind of concerned about their gravel roads.
That was a motion to table that.
No, I'm sure he wants to move the manure, and now is the time, so I don't think we should table it, do you?
I don't, not table it, but Dick, just make sure you oversee it and...
And if there is a problem, come back to us.
Oh, okay.
I think in the meantime, we can let, we can go ahead and vote on this.
Okay, let's have a motion.
But do we, fine without his signature?
Do we need to make a contingent upon him signing it?
Well, you can approve it, but it's not, I mean, if we're saying these documents are contingent upon both signatures, they need both signatures to be effective.
So I guess I'd make a motion to approve contingent on all signatures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moving seconded, Krogman, Jensen, okay, discussion.
I have, I have a concern that normally, we get a map that shows where that there's going to be a culvert put in for the purposes of doing the transfer of the manure, and we don't have that. And I, I think, I understand that we need, he needs to be doing it, but is it possible to say that, subject to him selecting an area for the culvert that's acceptable to the Highway Superintendent? Put that in, because if there ends up being a dispute, you don't know what he's going to do exactly, do you, Dick?
He just, what he initially wanted to do is use one of our culverts. So I think he wants to go about 50 yards from that, is the way I understood it, but I can't say, you know, that I went out there with him and he pointed right where it was going to go.
I think we need a map.
Okay.
So is that a motion to amend the original motion to require a map before this is effective?
Map or approval of the Highway Superintendent?
Yeah, again, if we're going to require a map, then we're going to have to wait for another meeting, for them to provide another map, which is another two weeks. I think if he talks with Dick, and Dick says, "Yep, that looks good with me," that I would trust Dick's judgment, judgment there, and not have to wait two more weeks, so...
We just don't want to be in a situation where he and Dick have a dispute, and he says, "Well, the Commission said I can do it, and you can't tell me I can't." So I just want to stand corrected properly for that.
You can make a motion to amend that require a map.
Okay.
A map or agreement from the, there, because we require a map, we're the ones supposed to...
How about a motion that the location has to be approved by the Highway Superintendent?
Yeah, that's amending the original motion. Is there a second to LeAnn's motion?
A second.
Pierce, Krogman, on a, to amend it that a map has to be provided to the Highway Superintendent, is that correct?
Not a map.
Actually, my motion was that it had the location of the culvert had to be approved by the Highway Superintendent.
Location, and approved by the Highway Superintendent, that is the amendment to the original motion. And any other question or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, the original motion...
First amended.
Huh?
Don't we have another amendment first that we have to deal with?
Thought we just had, now we have the amended, the first one that was approved. And that had a, you said, you added something to your motion.
It was contingent upon getting all signatures.
Okay, contingent on getting all signatures.
Motion was to approve it, contingent upon signatures.
And with your amendment.
Yeah.
Any questions on the, what we're voting on?
Mr. Chair, and not to confuse things further, but this is an old form. As you see, it was drafted by Mr. Cradville when he was in the old building, so it's significantly older. And Dick and I are working on making sure this is all updated and in compliance, and hopefully, we can address some of these concerns going forward with the next one we have.
One other question, who receives the request? Does, Dick, you receive the request? Yeah, to do stuff like that. I guess I would say this, down, down the road, coming there, if somebody turns one in without a map, they want to suggest that down the road here, it'd be a lot easier to get this through in a timely manner if you had a map showing where it was, and we were all approved before we bring this. Yeah.
Okay. Any other question or discussion? Everybody's clear on what we're voting for? Okay, all the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Item H, approval of agreement number 15-50, an application for easement in county right-of-way by Old Tree Farms. I would recommend possibly making that motion with the language that we just passed.
Move to approve, contingent upon signatures, and the location of the culvert approved by our county director of the department.
Very good.
Second.
Krogman, Miller, that the agreement has all the signatures and the locations been worked out with our Highway Superintendent? Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. All right. What time is it? 9:50, okay. Item I, approval of resolution number 15-17, resolution approving final plat, 2015 plat 005, plat of lot H1 in southeast quarter, section six, Township 109, north range 49, west of the 5th Primaridian in Brookings County. Is there...
Move to approve.
Krogman.
Second.
Miller.
If I could speak to all the plats at one time, these were heard on our March 20th scheduled, special scheduled meeting, and sent to this board with a recommendation to approve. These are the right-of-ways for 34th Avenue South that's being reconstructed by the county, and they have been reviewed by the Deputy State's Attorney and sent to this board with a recommendation of approval.
Okay. Yes, LeAnn.
Is there a reason, because these are our plats, that we can't have one motion to approve all 11 of them?
We've tried that before.
I'm, I'm just asking, is...
I'm going to ask if I can just read the agreement.
I mean, it's the Chair's decision how he wants to handle the agenda. I always, I always request that matters be heard separately, just for their individual recognition, but if the Chair feels they can be handled in one, so be it.
The Chair feels like it could be handled all in one, but I will go with the pleasure of the Commission.
I think it's very important to do them individually.
I think it's important that we stay consistent, so...
And that's what we've done.
So, but I, I guess the one thing I, you know, reading the entire thing, if we could do
Agreement.
Approval resolution 15-17 as, as written in our packet, I, I would think would save us a little time.
I agree. Okay. All right, so we have one right now, 15-17.
Motion approved.
Well, we already got that.
Yeah, we got that already.
Yeah, yeah, then we got a discussion, then we got a discussion about the future motions. Any other question or discussion? Okay, not hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. J, resolution 15-18.
So moved.
Second.
Krogman, Pierce, question or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All the same sign. Resolution number 15-19.
So moved.
Second.
Krogman, Pierce, any question or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Approval of resolution number 15-20.
So moved.
Second.
Miller, Jensen, any question or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Which one did I just leave, 20?
20, yeah.
Okay. Resolution 15-21.
Motion approved.
Move to approve. Jensen, Krogman, any question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All the same sign, motion carries. Approval of resolution number 15-22.
So moved.
Second.
Miller, Krogman, any question or discussion? Hearing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Resolution number 15-23.
So moved.
Second.
Krogman, Jensen, any question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Approval of resolution 15-24.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, Pierce, Miller, any question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Approval of resolution 15-25.
So moved.
Second.
Krogman, Jensen, any question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Approval of resolution 15-26.
So moved.
Second.
Miller, Krogman, question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Approval of resolution number 15-27.
So moved.
Second.
Jensen, Pierce, question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to stay, just go over the SLA quarterly agreements next, or is there any? Is there a motion to approve the SLA quarter?
Move to approve.
Miller. Krogman. Any questions on approving the quarterly agreement?
This is our quarterly report card, quote unquote, that is sent to peer to show what activities we've done with our state and local agreement, where they reimburse us approximately 50% of our expenditures. It is a federal grant administered through the state of South Dakota that comes back to the local government.
Okay. What was our grade, I tried to find it on our report card, what was it? Okay, A minus, is it, okay, very good. Any other question or discussion on the motion? Did, oh wait, Jenna, did I, who made the, I've made so many motions there.
Um, Miller motioned it.
Okay, very good. Just want to make sure it's done, okay. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, how we, 9:57? And in three minutes, we'll have a resolution, volunteerism. And so, somebody want to take a three-minute break before the 10 o'clock?
Do it.
Okay. Get back here. Three minutes. Call the meeting back to order. And it's 10 o'clock. We have scheduled for, scheduled item for Stephanie Bolchi, Lead Program Specialist for the RSVP and the Foster Grandparent Program. And before we get to the resolution... We have scheduled for, scheduled item for Stephanie Bulchi, Lead Program Specialist for the RSVP and the Foster Grandparent Program. And before we get to the resolution portion, I would like for her to come and address the Commission.
Thank you for this. Just a little bit about what this is, is the Corporation for National Community Service has started a project where we honor our volunteers. For the last several years, we've done a Mayor's Day in Brookings where the mayor has done a proclamation and signed for honoring volunteers that work in our community and our county. And this year, they added County Day. And I do have a lot of volunteers that work in the city, but my biggest accomplishment, I guess I would say, is with the help of Marty, was we got the Patrol Program started with the county over ten years ago. And I just wanted, I thought it would, it was a better fit to do County Day instead of Mayor's Day because of our wonderful volunteers that help with the county. And I just was going to share a couple of facts. I won't take a lot of time, but since the program started, and I think they're two thousand and five, correct? We started in February of two thousand and five. We've had over twenty, probably about twenty-five volunteers that have been with the Patrol Program, and some of them have been with it since it started. And I know that a few of them are deciding that it's time to retire, are going to be leaving, but just for your information, there has, they have contributed to the county with the Sheriff's Department over six thousand hours that they've given to the county since two thousand and five. We keep track of that. And so, I just invited them to come along so they could be honored. We're just thanking them for their dedication that they have given to the community and the surrounding county. And I guess RSVP and Foster Grandparent Program is something that I have worked with for the last ten-plus years. Just wanted to say thank you to our volunteers. Marty, do you have anything?
Well, just quickly, the, quickly.
No, I was laughing that you nearly knocked her out, grabbing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I wasn't.
Anyway, the volunteers have, have, have helped the Sheriff's Office quite a bit. You know, at the present time, we're getting more and more vacation houses and those types of things. And actually, the volunteers check the vacation houses when, when someone leaves. And they, they do a lot of duties that take away from me having to send a deputy sheriff out, such as that there's signs down. At one point, they went out and checked all the signs in the county, the nine-one-one signs and the road signs to make sure they're up and reported those things. They also, about every other year, go to all the businesses in the county and make sure that we have their updated information, their telephone numbers, people that we should contact. So if the deputies are out and they find a building open or, 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 or there's some damage to it, that we have a business on call that we can call that business. Those are, those are, and I don't like to have them chase cattle, but every once in a while, especially my farm background RSVPs, they'll get out and open up the gate. They'll probably do a little more than my deputies do. My deputies will honk the horn and hope they go in. And the RSVPs will actually open the gate and get them in. And just this week, too, on one of the vacation houses, I called the girls, Carmen and Kathy, they were the checking one, and found a garage door open. And I called the person that's taking care of it for, for the owner. And they were there a couple of days ago, and they, they thought they locked the door. So they're actually out there checking, too. They do, do a great job with those things. Just a couple of quick things what they've done. A few years ago, and the girls did this, too, was that the lions were stolen on top of Jim's Tap. And they only got one lion off. Those were pretty heavy. And I have an area out in the county I call Devil's Bridge, and it's something that's on, it's on South Twenty-second Avenue. You go to the, to the bridge there. And they were out there patrolling, and they saw something in the snowbank in a, in a blue blanket. It ended up being one of those lions. So, so we recovered that for, for them. And another time, Lyle Tufti saw smoke coming from a farmyard, and there was a, and he checked it out, and there was a tractor on fire. The farmer had just parked his tractor and went into the machine shed, and, and his tractor was on fire. And the RSVPs notified him that. We got the fire department and stuff. And they did, they just, they take, they do things that I, that, that I just don't, it takes time for a deputy to go out and do. So they do a great job for me, and I encourage them to go to places and drink coffee because where you drink coffee is when people come up and say, oh, by the way, I got this bike laying in my yard, or, you know, I've seen cars coming and going at this house and things like that, so.
And I would like to add, too, that RSVP has been hooking up, or should say, working together with a lot of police departments throughout the nation. And how we kind of started the program was we took, the Mitchell Police Department has been working with the RSVP program for many, many years. And that's kind of how we, we based it when we started it. And throughout the whole nation, I think that Brookings County is the only county in the United States that has a program with the RSVP program. All the rest of them are through the city, through cities. And I think that we've even had somebody that came from Washington, D.C. to talk to Marty and I several years ago about how the program was initiated, how it began, 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 sorry, and just was something that they hadn't seen before. So it was something that we started.
Yeah, so, guess that's it.
The other thing, too, when we're finished here, next door, Stephanie brought some cookies. And so, when we're done here, if you, when you finish up with your rest of your meeting, unless you want to call a very large recess and go have a cookie.
Because with Marty here and the other guys, there might not be a cookie left.
That's always a bribe. They wouldn't have came unless there was cookies.
Well, we'll see what the Commissioners want to do. I know they don't want to be here till two in the afternoon again, like the last meeting. But before we make a motion, I'd like to read the resolution first and then accept a motion to accept this resolution. It's resolution number fifteen dash fifteen, a resolution declaring April seventh, two thousand and fifteen, as National Service Recognition Day. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's counties are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet county needs. And whereas senior corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for jobs of the twenty-first century, I assume that's not the center, and, and approving, and supporting veterans and military families, providing health service, and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas the senior corps participants serve in more than sixty thousand locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteer. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, patriotism by making intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas Brookings County utilizes the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program in the Sheriff's Department, the county has volunteer storm spotters, disabled American veterans, van drivers, volunteer their time to take veterans to appointments, and the county appoints volunteers to boards that serve Brookings County. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with counties nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, strengthen communities, and is joining with the National Association of Counties across the country for the County Day of Recognition for National Service on April seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Therefore, be it resolved that the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim April seventh, two thousand and fifteen, as the National Service Recognition Day, encourages residents to recognize the positive impact of national service to our country, in our country, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Miller, Krogman, to approve. Any question or discussion?
I, in the discussion portion, would you introduce your RSVP attendees here today?
Well, let's see here. I'm going to do the two ladies up front are Kathleen Holloman and Ms. Carmen Waika. And in the back, you're going to have to help me with this because I haven't met all of these guys. I just, I know that one, and I know Mr. David Peterson.
David's a noted educator. Previous. Previous.
No longer educator. Yep, so are they.
Bob Oldson. And Carl, help me with your last name. I always mispronounce that, so I'll let him.
And I've, I've spoken to them, but I haven't actually seen a couple of them yet, so.
And I'm a barber from the white area, so they, they know everything over in the white area. They help with, what's nice is when, when cows and stuff are out, they usually can locate the owners and, and help them. Dennis is a newer one. Dennis is, his wife is Kathy in my office, so he, he hangs around since he retired, so I told him, you might as well go to work.
Welcome to our meeting.
Yeah. Any other question or discussion?
I also just wanted to say thank you for your service because if citizens don't step forward and, and offer to help, county government, other government doesn't get the job done by themselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, not hearing any more question or discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Adopted this seventh day of April, two thousand and fifteen, resolution fifteen fifteen. Thank you very much. Did you want a break for cookies, or do you want to plow ahead? We'll, okay, we'll move forward. Item U is discussion of possible liquor license ordinance. And I would say Commissioner Pierce has really led the charge on this, and as with our staff, Abby and, Vicky's not here. So, Leann, would you like to lead it up?
I, I would. I just got to get to the right spot in my book here. In, what we did as a, as a subcommittee is we looked at the various different liquor license ordinances we could find for various other counties online. We looked at the South Dakota statute on the liquor licenses and looked a little bit at some case law on liquor licenses. And we don't, don't have any ordinance in place. There are a number of different issues that can be addressed in a liquor license besides the one thing you all asked us to do, which was to look at the application process. And we, what we did is we came up with this proposed ordinance. It's not polished, it's not final, and it's not in the order that we're going to put it in. We just put each different section in we want. We thought we'd have one ordinance that dealt with all of the liquor license issues, but we're going to change the order on here. But we wanted to bring it back in front of you to see if we're moving in the direction, before we have a final document to bring for approval, if we're moving in a direction that the board wanted. One of the things that we looked at is under South Dakota law, you can have a special alcoholic beverage license for special events. We don't have an ordinance on that. I think we do it, but we don't have an ordinance. And so, we put in the, the language that is in the code saying that we could issue such a license not to exceed fifteen consecutive days, and that no entity could have more than three special event licenses in any one calendar year. They had to comply with any applicable alcohol laws, and that the fee would be one hundred dollars for such a license.
The. Per, per request. So, per request, correct?
Exactly.
So if somebody wanted two of them, they had to pay a hundred dollar fee for the first one, a hundred dollar for the second one.
Exactly.
We, we have not charged a fee prior to this, correct, for those special ones? And I, the special ones that come to us are like the Ponset Pounders come for a two-day deal that they have. And, and those are organizations that are trying to raise their own funds to do things. And so, I'm not, you know, it's entirely up to the other Commissioners, but I'm not sure that in those types of situations, it's necessary to charge them a fee. We have so few, and they're usually for that type of thing.
Requires that they are for charitable, fraternal
Yeah, so I don't like. I, I guess the only rub that I have is that, and I, I just, I think that we shouldn't charge a fee for that.
Okay. Well, let's just take, take that. How do you, what's your thoughts on?
There are a few other new fees.
Yeah, so I guess I, point taken. I don't disagree or not, I think I want to hear the whole, see the whole thing, and then maybe discuss some of those.
Okay. And those are the things we wanted to bring back in front of you so that we'd know what direction the Commission wanted to go. Okay. Then the, the next section deals with the time for selling or serving alcoholic beverages. And again, that follows the state statute. You do need to make a determination as relates to Sundays. I'm trying to remember if we put this in. Yes. And number two, we said that we can issue license for, for sale of alcohol on Sundays. I believe we've been doing that. We just noted on the license, we just didn't have an ordinance that gave us permission to do that. And Memorial Day, under state law, you have to have an ordinance that allows you to sell alcohol on Memorial Day. And then this clarified what the penalty would be for, for a violation of, of alcohol sale. Any questions on that one? Section C has to do with regulating the consumption of alcoholic beverages on county property. And it says that the consumption of alcoholic beverages upon property owned, leased, or rented by the county is prohibited unless authorized between the county, well, except under the conditions set forth below, except for what we're doing out at Swiftel.
Any other exceptions that you, I'm sure you've thought of.
We, we weren't aware of any other exceptions that we as, in a contractual way, already have granted authority to somebody to use alcohol.
Really the only county property where an event, you know, this building, but I think that would come through Joint Powers Board. I think that's something that, you know, that both city and county would need to discuss. The other county properties are the courthouse, Sheriff's Office, highway. We have outlying highway shops.
Okay.
And then the other one would be the County Resource Center. And with our agreement with Swiftel, I think that's stated in there, ten sixty-one. So that, that, I guess, through the discussion, we thought that would be the only exception.
Alright, sounds good.
In paragraph two, allows someone to apply to consume alcohol on county property, and then follows the state statute again for what you have to post. Any other questions for that? The alcoholic beverage section of the code allows a licensee fee for video lottery machines. We are not using one. We put this in. Commission can look at it and see if they want to do that. Says that any holder of a video license that is allowed to have video lottery machines shall pay an annual license fee in the amount of fifty dollars per year for each video lottery machine licensed on the premises. And they would submit that fee when they submit their application. And again, it's just, that's allowed by statute. It's typical for counties. We included that for your consideration.
Do we have a limit on the number of machines? That can be enough?
I, I don't believe there is, no.
I think the state has ten.
I think that comes.
I knew there was a limit in at least the city. I didn't know if the city had put that on or the state.
I believe that when it comes to video lottery machines, only the state, the Department of Revenue can govern anything. That's my understanding.
Can we then charge a fee, though?
We can. This is by statute.
Okay.
This is the other new fee that is in the ordinance that we haven't had in the past. Other counties are charging this. This is fifty dollars per machine, per year, that would be paid at the time that they, you know, renew their application.
And when they renew their application, there's not, they don't pay a fee to do that, is that correct?
There is just the renewal fees. There's not an application fee, no.
How, how much is that renewal fee, do you know? How much is that renewal fee, do you know?
It depends on the type of license that they're renewing.
Really, this $50 fee is just, I've thought a little bit about it, because again, it's a new fee. It's not a lot of money. It's not gonna make any big difference in our budget. But what it does do is compensate the county for the paperwork done for all of these things that we process in order to, for them to be able to be in business. So that's up to you, whether you want such a fee or not.
LeAnn, how you have written is an annual fee for the video lottery. Versus when you were asked about renewal, you were referring to the liquor or malt beverage license.
Right.
Yeah, that's by, once the ball gets rolling, the Department of Revenue takes over.
Exactly. And then the last part, and I think we're gonna move this up to the front of the proposed ordinance, deals with the application process. And it would just, there is an application form that's done through the Department of Revenue. People just fill that out, they submit it to the county, and then they have to accompany that by a fee. The fees are set forth in the code, and it depends on how close they are to a town and how many people live in the town. And maybe somebody else has a better explanation for that, but we don't pick that fee, actually. It's governed by statute. We did put in some requirements that are not in the statute, that we saw in other counties' ordinances that we liked, regarding the fact that you can't come in and ask for a liquor license and not have a facility, okay? And if you're going to be building a facility, it provides in here that you can have that license for a period of time, but if you don't have the facility done, and you're not using the license, it comes back to the county, so we could give it to somebody else if it's not being used. And that's why some of those things that are in there. And number five in particular says that to have the liquor license, you have to be in compliance with all the Brookings County zoning ordinances. Now, again, it's required by statute, but we think that should be required. So that's what we.
I'll put in my two cents again on the video machine fees. We're not in this to make money. And I just, I hate to charge our outside establishments fees that I just don't feel that we need to charge them for those video lottery machines, or back to that $100 either. So the, I like what they've done, and thank you very much. I know that that's hard work. The only thing that I would change would be to take those fees out. It's my opinion.
Yes, and I'm on the same page with Commissioner Miller on this one, too. Again, most of those fees are for, you know, nonprofits that are trying to raise some money, and for us to try to pull a little bit from them, just to get, you know, get a little piece of the pie, I guess I'm not all for that. I think if they are in compliance, they do what the law says, or the ordinance says, that we don't need to try to pull a little bit from what they're, they're, they're. I think most of the time, they're looking to try to, a nonprofit trying to gain something there, and I just don't feel tried to pull that from them, too. The video lottery, I understand that, but again, everybody's pulling from that again, and the amount of money that we're getting is gonna be very slim, and it's just another fee on top of another fee. I just don't think it's, we need to do that. We haven't, and it's not in our budget. I don't think it's gonna be enough to even worry about. I'm just not in favor of the fees either. I think it looks great, besides the fees. Appreciate the work. Obviously, you guys have done your research on the codified laws and the state laws, and to try and coincide everything into that to make a good, so I really applaud you for that. Again, I'm with Commissioner Miller. I'd like to see the fees taken out.
And I agree with that. I kind of went back and forth in my own mind on that, but we put everything in here we're allowed to do, and then can pick and choose and throw out what we don't want, so.
Well, obviously, if establishment isn't being charged something, and something new comes, there's gonna be resistance. Whether it's appropriate, I guess, Marty, I don't know how often we get our video lottery's machine broken into, do we pay the gas for the sheriff to go out there? I mean, they are additional, sometimes, in some counties, additional service versus, not that there's not crime other places, but they are sometime attractive. But I don't know, I don't see much in Brookings County, breaking into machines. And I honestly can't remember what the city charges, to tell you the truth, if they even charge anything.
Stacy, I think you told us how many video lottery machines are in the county, and I don't remember the number.
I'd say we'll do a little more, we'll put the video lottery under the research category, is that, get a little more information.
Another question. How does this going to fit in now we have this for our selection down the road here? This really doesn't say how we're gonna select this one. Is that the next step after this?
The, no, this is, this is it, then when we do have to let people know, do our advertising, that we have this liquor license available, then we'll get in our applicants. If we only have one, and the question's the same, whether we have one or more than one, it's just easier if you have one. But we have to decide, there are only two things we really look at, is whether the applicant's suitable, and whether the location's suitable. And so, if we had more than one applicant, the suitability of the applicant generally just tends to be whether or not they have any felony convictions that would keep them from qualifying. Exactly.
But, I mean, it seems like just previously, when a license showed up, first applicant, we just said there. What's the advertising requirements that we have for that? See, that was my question, too. Are we gonna put something in here that says, if a license comes available, we will advertise it to the public, and within 30 days of deadline, that we make a decision, have a presentation, or, because previously, I think somebody came in, they said, yeah, you got a license available, okay, here you go. You got all your stuff. I guess I'd like to see what would stop us from approving it right now, because we really don't have any advertising, and we don't have any thing right now that says there. Should we put something in here?
We would advertise that, and the statute on liquor licenses provides a sample notice that you have to use. We thought that with this process, that we'd follow the South Dakota chapter on the application process, and maybe we need to make that clearer in here, but we do need to advertise that we have a liquor license. And I think we have to do that before September 1st, but I didn't bring that piece of.
I've heard two different things, though. We don't, and we do.
Well, yeah, that's, if we have the state thing, we can reference that, say.
We can put it, we can clarify that.
Issued based on the state, you know, laws and recommendation there, or that kind of stuff, but that's my question, is I'd like a little bit of an idea, so the general public, whoever has the wish to apply for one of these licenses, has, knows the date and the time, and when we're supposed to do it, you know, and maybe something says, if a license, another additional license becomes available, or somebody does not, or gives up their license for some reason, they go out of business now, that one's available, that we have certain deadlines to try to do that, because that's, we kind of made that mistake last time here, where we didn't act in time, and now we had to wait another whole six months. So, I don't know if some of those dates could be put into this, so if the average person was looking at it and saying, okay, I gotta have this in by this date, otherwise I'm gonna have to wait a whole year. I guess that'd be something I would, you know.
We did talk about giving at least six months to get their business plan in order, if they were granted it also.
And I think that's in there, yeah.
Were we looking at July 1, or something like that, if possible?
Number six on.
Six, yeah. Allows them one year for construction of approved structure.
So we can go back, we'll look at those issues, we'll kind of flesh out a little bit how the advertising will get done, maybe delete the fees, although I heard Tom say, talk a little bit more about the video lottery fee.
A little more research there, but I, you know, then the commission can decide.
The fee's $100 for the nonprofit, I feel if it was in there, I'd probably make a motion to not charge the fee, waive the fee. Video lottery, that's what I was wondering, how many machines were allowed in those outside municipality businesses? Usually only seen one or two, but I guess I don't see any reason to charge a 50.
And so, would you want us to make these changes and bring back a document in the form, ready to take action on? Or do you want to have another conversation before we put it on for action?
Well, I'd say the hundreds out, and the video lottery, I guess. We're definitely gonna get pushback, I guess, from the people that currently have licenses. I'd just like to refresh my memory a little bit of the process on the fees with them, and I, on the fence, I guess. We can take an in and out with a motion, you know.
Well, I think, you know, we've got some good changes there, a little bit of work, made those changes, brought that back. Maybe add a little more further discussion, and if there's one change, we can probably approve it with a small change. If there's more, more, we can do it that way.
Put it on for action, then?
I think so. Discussion, action, possible, you know, type of thing, so, you know.
Yeah, we can take them both out, and we can always add them back in if you want. I mean, that's always.
It'll have been on the agenda now, two meetings, so if the public is concerned about it, or that kind of stuff, they'll have heard this one, and they get another chance for a discussion down the road, too, so.
But to be clear, we're shooting for action. Yes. The only, and first of all, as sending in on the meetings, LeAnn and Abby did a ton of work. The only question I had, we emailed afterwards, was that we referred to a special alcohol beverage license. And the state looks at alcohol beverages, including not only a liquor license, but malt beverage and wine, and some parts of the law are different for them. So I didn't know, didn't get a clear direction from the emails. Are we going to, there's a little conflict in a couple of places. We referred to alcoholic beverages and referred to liquor. Do we want to have this all encompassing for all alcohol beverages? And if so, then we need to kind of address the malt beverage slash wine licenses, which have a little different set of rules.
I think it would, would it be difficult to make it all inclusive, because they do have two separate lists of rules? The criteria is different for each group.
There's a little, a few different twists, and so, and when you get your Department of Revenue, and it has, you know, wholesale, retail, and all the different fees, they're broken out. It's under alcoholic beverages, but they list those beverages as what type of license, on off, et cetera.
But this particular license that we're issuing is not just the malt and wine. This is, this is the liquor license, and I think this is different.
Then I would list it as liquor license, just zero right in on that. And later, if we don't have any ordinances concerning malt beverage or wine, maybe we want to look at a different section on that. That's just my suggestion, and, you know.
I think that's okay, but I don't.
Can you imagine me being there with two attorneys and discussing this thing, so? But that's just my suggestion. Go make sure we're consistent, that we're talking about a liquor license. And then if we, malt beverage, wine would be, have a lot of the same language. I mean, a lot of the rules are the same, but there are a few things would be separate, and maybe that's something to look at down the road. Or how have we been issuing them all along, because we have them out there?
So Tom, are you only talking about the special events, or are you talking about the whole thing?
The title.
Okay, you're talking about the title, okay.
And any word that would cause any confusion, that if we're addressing liquor license, we should address liquor license. I don't even know how we do the malt beverage now. Maybe we've got some, do we have an ordinance on that one? Just been doing what we're doing. And it's a little, you know, it's got a couple little different twists to it. The fee is different. It's just one solid fee versus the nearest incorporated city and all that kind of stuff, so. Those little tweaks.
Well, we'll go back, we'll look at it more, and if we think we're going down the road, you just directed us on, we'll put it on for action, otherwise we'll bring it back to look at. But we're trying to meet those timelines for getting our ad out and getting everything lined up.
Can I just ask, are we having another subcommittee meeting, or are we just communicating via email to make these changes?
I'm satisfied with email. If it breaks down where we're not communicating, then I guess we need to get together. Vicky's not here.
Do we just want to?
I'm open to you, so.
Stacy and I can just work on making the changes that have been discussed today, and we'll send out a new draft to the group, and if there's further issues, we can schedule a time to meet then, perhaps.
The only thing that I think might take a little more is the stuff that Tom just raised.
Yeah, just going through, just make sure we're consistent with the wording, that's all. And I've seen some Deputy Secretary Howard's work, and she is on the wording. So I'm happy with that. Is that okay with you, Commissioner Pierce?
That works.
And thank you very much, both of you. All right, Commission Department Director report.
Me and my staff report was included in the packet. Some of the stuff we've already gone over. But I did, Bob and I met with Correction Sergeant Darren D. Young and a number of people from the city to discuss. We held a, what was called an after, what was it, after event, after-action meeting regarding the lockdown, the accidental lockdown of this building that took place on March 10th. It was a very productive meeting. You know, we went over some things. I think one thing is, that I'd brought to the board previously was, this has been a while ago. You know, currently in the building, when you want to dial 911, you have to dial 9911. And I, we're gonna look at changing that, I think, in the event of an emergency. I think we, you know, what that incident showed was that in an emergency situation, you're gonna do, the first thing that comes to your mind in dialing that preceding 9 is just not something that's been ingrained in people. So that was a very productive meeting. We'll be meeting again at the end of this month again. Just a reminder, we're meeting, like Joyce said, as the Equalization Board next Tuesday, April 14th. It's gonna start at 8:30. We'll still go through all of the reports. As Joyce said, no appeals yet. We'll see what happens by, in the next couple of days. Following that, we will then convene as the County Board of, Board of County Commissioners again to approve bids that are open this afternoon for the 34th Avenue project. So that'll just be one continuous meeting. If there are no appeals, it shouldn't go too terribly long, so. Just some upcoming dates there listed on my report. A bid opening this afternoon, your senior officials workshop Bob is doing this Thursday here in the chambers from 9:00 to 4:00, the equalization meeting next week. Elkton Fire Department's county feed is Monday, April 20th, and the Volunteers of America Rise and Shine Benefit Breakfast, May 8th. In front of you, I handed out, Bruce Fire Department is having their county feed on Friday, April 17th. That just came to us late last week, but I wanted to make sure you were aware of that, since it's before before our next regularly scheduled meeting, so. That's on Friday, April 17th, 5:30 social, 6:30 meal. It's up at the Bruce Community Center. We have been doing maintenance interviews. We had a couple yesterday, a couple tomorrow for the general maintenance worker position that we have open. So hopefully, we will be offering that position to someone here yet this week, and get that position filled. And I think Michelle had emailed out to you some examples of the strategic plan. She had, she put together several different options, a couple, a brochure format, just an eight and a half by 11 kind of, you know, like a program format, and then just just a regular full eight and a half by 11. If you had any opinions on that, I do have the examples here with me today, or you can stop down in my office and take a look. But if, do you care how we get that, that information out? Did anybody take a look at them? at them and have an opinion?
I looked at them and I guess I didn't need it. Oh, we're fine, I guess. Whatever seems to be.
I went with the trifold because the headings didn't, headings matched the topic.
Okay.
And some of the other ones that end here and that would continue on. And I think that was the trifold.
Yeah, the brochure. Yeah.
Yeah. That was the only.
Okay. We'll get that sent out. We'll get that out to department heads. Lastly, Naco, as Bob had said, the Naco National Convention is coming up July 10th through the 13th. It's in Charlotte, North Carolina this year. Just wondering tentatively if anyone had it on their radar to attend that meeting. We said it's getting to be time to make registration and.
Okay. I have a very good friend there, but I'm going to be a very nice family those days. So I'm not available.
I'll be in Minneapolis.
I don't know. Next year, maybe. I.
Okay. Well, we've got a little time, but it, right? Got a little time. Give us some information on July 10th through the 13th, you said?
July 10th through the, July 10th through the 13th. I don't know if there's a tentative agenda out there.
There's not an, not an agenda. Oh, yeah. I mean, I've got a little preliminary booklet we can scan, have scanned and sent out to the commission.
Yeah.
And typically, there's a technology meeting on that if the, if the commission department director is gone, typically she needs to be there on, on the 10th. So fly in on the night. There's a technology, eight hour technology session that they typically attend, or as I would attend.
I wasn't thinking about it at this time, but send out some information. I had thought.
Anything?
That's all I have unless you have any other questions.
Thank you very much, Stacy. Okay. Deputy State's Attorney report.
Just briefly, I just want to thank the board for granting our internship wage increase request. Our intern will start May 11th, and I think she is certainly worth the increased wage. So we do appreciate that on behalf of our office. Clyde and I will be attending the annual State's Attorneys Conference in Deadwood, May 5th through 8th. We'd leave after the County Commission meeting that day. So I won't miss a meeting and our office will still be fully staffed during that time period with our support staff. But he and I will be in attendance at that. I have to attend the planning and zoning meeting this evening to update on some information. And then just so that you're aware, the Register is currently doing a story on the new juvenile justice reform bill. And they did interview me and just, you might see an, an article coming out in the future days. Just, again, there's a lot that is unknown still, but I think they're trying to just provide some information to the public to be aware of the changes that are coming. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. I think we're, Commissioner Reports. Discussion items. Anything you've got going on in your life that we need to know? That we need to know? And we'll start with you, Commissioner.
Okay. I went to the post legislative luncheon with all of you on March 25th. On March 26th, I toured Aquatech with the First District Board. That was just very interesting. That is just such a great opportunity for, for the Brookings County. Went to the SwifteL Advisory Board Meeting on March 26th. I gave each of you a copy of their annual report so that if you have any questions about that. I did ask the question that Stephanie had about the water hookup and, and some electrical thing. They paid for that. We didn't pay for any of that. They did want to know if I had any update information on what's going on with the Resource Center. I told them we'd have that on a, on a work plan and we're going to be moving forward hopefully eventually on that. Attended the Legislative Forum as part of the Intergovernmental Committee assignment that I have with the chamber on March 28th. And again, that was really well attended. There were a lot of people. Went to the Youth Activities Jamboree at SwifteL on March 30th, and that was kind of fun. Attended the Brookings County Night on March, excuse me, on March 31st. We had a Governmental Affairs Meeting on April 2nd. There was some conversation about that meeting we held after the post legislative meeting. Maybe doing that twice a year instead of once a year. Does this group have a feeling on that? There, there were people that thought that that might be productive.
Thoughts?
I mean, the more communication we can have, the better. So.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I think that their strategic plan said one or two.
At least once, yeah.
Yeah. So it'd fit with that.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah. We blamed all the bad things on you, Leon, at that meeting, right after you left. Okay.
I also attended the post legislative luncheon. Very interesting and informative, knowing what SDSU is moving forward with, the city. And, and we were able to express what we were doing also. I also attended Brookings Fire Department Feed. Very well attended. It was kind of a hard place to find a parking spot that night. There was a lot of people in attendance. So. Also, we had a South Brookings Drainage Meeting, April 1st. City was represented, Midary Township, County, some area residents out there. Also, the Core Engineers were also there. We expressed our concerns and some of our intentions to the Core. As we progressed with the meeting, the Core was asked what his initial feelings were on our project, if we would move forward. And basically what he was saying was, hearing, in order to move forward with our project, it would be a very long, intense process. Being the fact that we would not be able to increase the amount of water deposited into the Sioux River or create, should I say turbidity or stir up the Sioux River. And we're also dealing with factors that groundwater is essentially right almost to the top of the ground. And it's kind of, the project maybe is probably not going to move forward. We're going to have, Midary Township's having another meeting. We're going to look at some more options and meet, Midary Township's going to come forward with a date that we may have another meeting. The Core, we're dealing with wetlands, the process to, if we were to move, to proceed to move or build a trench, where to deposit material, vice versa. It's very complicated. And we also might bring NRCS to the table so we can gather some more information also at the next meeting. So. Also, I have had.
Okay, I follow you up. I, I thought you did a great job summarizing. And I think the ball is in their court, is where we left it. I think they got a glazed overlook like we did when we were confronting all the different options.
Who's they?
Well, they being some landowners and the Midary Township and, well, the city and us. And we all had a glazed look by the time we got done hearing all the different options and the option, you know, we kept looking at options besides the eighty-five plan. I mean, other things. And every one of them came up with something. And so they're going to, they being the Midary Township and maybe some of the landowners are going to get together and they're going to mull all this information over and, and get back to us. You know, we want to do what we can do for them without being a burden on the rest of the taxpayers. I mean, we got to do this fairly. And it just was a lot of information and we didn't leave with a conclusion. Now, there was an individual here that was participating in it and he left very concerned about the joint jurisdiction, planning and zoning, and just what we're going to allow and not allow in that area. And, and, and the joint, you know, right now, we're concerned about the merging of developments into the city as they grow and all those things. But also, what kind of things are you going to allow down in that valley, I guess, or whatever you call it, that drainage way? There are concern that to a degree that it would allow, currently FEMA allows you to build up a foot, but the ones that are already there are worried about displacement of water by that process. So I'm just warning you and warning them that when we finally get our compromise and the other one and the two boards get together, there's a lot of things to think about. And water, one of the most popular subjects around, is part of it. But that was a good report, Larry. Thanks.
And, and we'll give the whole commission a report once all the meetings are finished. A written report.
So basically to sum it up, the Core wasn't very responsive to our ideas.
They would listen to our ideas, but initially down the road, it's going to be a very hard process because if we do influx the flow of the river, we will have downstream people concerned also.
We, we discussed cleaning out what was there from back in the Work Progress Administration to, you know, concrete to more detention ponds and, you know.
Installing a pipe.
Some stupid ideas I came up, got shot down. I mean, everybody had an idea and tried to contribute to solve the problem. But every one of them, because of where the water is and how close it is, I mean, just every one of them, something.
There's no good answer because of the profile of the land. I mean, it's basically flat. I mean, there's, you can build a retention pond, but it's flat. You can't. There's no valleys to store it, basically. It is a storage area. If it's groundwater, retention pond, wherever, it's a storage area. Also, have received some calls from rural residents on the sign program. I don't know if Dick's received any calls, but in the, on the county roads, I've heard nothing but good. Everybody says, uh, looks great. The curves are marked. Now I can see them, the bridges, stop signs are new. Everything looks great. We're having some concerns on the rural roads. We don't need all these signs. Why is there a stop sign there? You know, initially, applied for this grant in 2010. It was, it was applied for to bring Brookings County into compliance with the state and federal regulations on signage. We were granted that grant. And then the townships were offered to participate in the grant also. All the townships in Brookings County participated. As it moved forward, I thought it was a great opportunity to address signage issues throughout the county. It was totally funded by the state, the work, the engineering and everything. I feel the, the added safety benefits from the sign program far outweigh the inconveniences of maintaining these signs or mowing around these signs are far outweighed. I, you know, I'd rather hear, I don't like to hear about an accident, but if there's an accident out there, it's, it's better to have a controlled intersection than to have an uncontrolled intersection. And somebody is harmed bodily or fatality would happen. And I hate to hear in the future that, jeez, we should have had a stop sign there. I feel this as being proactive and get ahead of, get ahead of the program. As road supervisors, I feel safety and liability. I mean, that's, you owe that to the community. So that's, I don't know if you've had any calls, but I've had numerous.
Okay. Is that it? Thank you, Commissioner Jensen. Commissioner Miller?
On March 25th, I attended the legislative update along with everyone else and the Intergovernmental Session. And I, I enjoy those. It's, it's good information for all of us. On the 22nd, I attended the First District Meeting, which began with a tour of our own prairie aquaculture. And I was glad to see Leon there. And, and their research focus is to improve animal health, nutrition and production efficiency by upgrading plant-based meal to high protein aquaculture and other animal feed. And they had fish is what they experiment on. And it was a fascinating tour. I would highly recommend that, that you go and, and talk to them about what they're doing. They're so excited. And, and it's, it's quite a deal out there. Following that then, we went into the First District Meeting. And they will help tweak the ordinances and twelve, since 1201 has passed. The Planning District will help us with our big funding plan. And, you know, they're just there for us. And, and Al Hooton gave a, a little program on the economic development that we have going on in Brookings County. And this is a new board to me, but it's my understanding that the, that First District kind of goes around to the different counties. So it's going to be kind of interesting to see what's going on in our surrounding counties. I, I know that Kingsbury is looking at getting a chicken plant. And they want it really bad. And I'm like, good. You guys, you go. April 3rd, we had a special commission meeting to initiate our burn ban. Oh, and on the 28th, I also went to the, that forum. And, and it was, it was a good, good time to listen to, to our candidates. And I think it was well attended and I was happy to see that because I think it's important that even though I can't vote for the city election, other than the school board, you know, I wanted to hear what they had to say because what they do does affect us. So it was very interesting. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ryan?
All right. Well, on the 25th, again, Chamber Legislative Luncheon and then the Joint Governmental Chat Session. So it was good. Definitely worth continuing to have, I think. And then on the 26th, I had a couple of board meetings. I had ICAP in the morning. Just to, you know, refresh everybody what ICAP does. They do so many different things throughout their area here. They do have Head Start Program, pre-birth to five. They work on transit in the smaller communities. They have a weatherization project that they try to work with. They have sixty-plus dining. They handle that. They have a housing rehabilitation group. They have self-help housing, which, you know, the ICAP housing, which in Brookings here, we've utilized very well. They're just finishing up their last build of a six and are looking at doing, I think, another four more. And they're looking for lots. And so it's a, it's a good program. It's been a program that's worked well in Brookings and, and gets that affordable housing opportunity out there. And, and as those houses come back on the market, they can continue to stay affordable. So it's a good program. They also have a Heartland House Report Navigator Program, which was the help with getting people into Obamacare and getting hooked up on, on insurance if they're not. So just a lot of different reports that they give on a, on a, on a meeting basis that they do a lot of good work on our, in our communities for the ones that are, are struggling to make ends meet. So it's a good project there. That afternoon, we had, or that evening, we had a hospital board meeting. BHS was named a 2015 Health Strong Hospital. So that was good. Highlights performing hospitals as determined through Hospital Strength Index. Industry's most comprehensive rating system for hospitals. They recognize the top performing hospitals measuring across sixty-two different performance metrics. And so quality outcomes, patient perspective, affordability. So that was good. And then February was their highest single cash flow month in BHS's history. Four, over four and a half million in cash flow. So they are doing well. A lot of their programs they're working on, their, their collaborations with different hospitals, with different doctors, the amount of surgeries that are, are up that they're doing here. And they just had a, had a huge, huge month. And things are going, going well there. And so obviously, they'll be looking forward to their new expansion to, to continue to build on their, their, their quality ratings are up and all that good stuff too. So things are going well at the, at the Brookings Health System right now. So. Had a meeting with the Central Behavioral Health Board. It's called a Member Engagement Subcommittee. They've put together some subcommittees to work on different projects that are trying to improve that board. And one of them is a member engagement, how they get their members a little more engaged. So let me think. And then, yeah, I think that's about it. So.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah. Any questions? Okay. Well, the 25th, I was at the chamber, the only reason, with everybody else. But I was thinking, you're on the Intergovernmental. And, you know, the school board had a meeting that, scheduled for that day, and so did SDSU. So hopefully, I know they got to work with David Owen's schedule, but I'd be, instead of taking notes to pass on to him. but I'd be, instead of taking notes to pass on to them, it'd been nice to have everybody in attendance. So maybe it's just impossible to get all the entities there, but if they had two of them, then that way... Okay, great. And then the 26th, I went to the hospital at noon for a little presentation that some of you had an opportunity and get up to date on the economic value of it and the health value of the hospital system. And also, they discussed Chuck Cecil's column, which brought the history of it. And I later was given more information to give Chuck, that fascinating history of the hospital and here. And, and then the hospital that was in VOGA that closed when that one opened and all the things that go with it. But it, I'm really glad that Commissioner Krogman stepped up and is our ex-official there. I mean, it's nice to have those three board members on there, but we don't have any communication with them, so thank you very much, Ryan. The 27th, met with Abby and she straightened me out on a few things. We signed some papers and got things ready for today. South, South Brookings Drainage, there is a letter that we had last time from Governor Dugard. I wonder if we shouldn't send a thank you in response. That's okay, fair one, and thank you, Stacy. Growth Partnerships meeting this Friday, and I should have a lot to report, a lot of good things, hopefully. And we're on the cusp of this week, right as we speak, working on some things. And let's see, well, I did talk to Kerry Brett, and ITC does have some wires in the right-of-way out there by Novita. Sioux Valley's not in the way. BMU has some test wells in the right-of-way, and they're going to cover them up and then come back later and put them in. We have a fence out there that's in the right-of-way in a couple of places, and this is what you're going to have to think about. Not all of them, but some of the people on the north side have their fence, so we're in there working. We tear their fence out. And actually, it's not their fence. It's our fence because it's in our right-of-way. So we'll have some public relations situations to work there, whether you want to pay for it.
And that brings up a point too, one of the, I got a call from the people that live, the only person that's on that road there. And they had Civil Divine come out and take a look. They have a buffer of trees that is right in front of them there. And they think, "We don't have anything in stone," but those trees are in our right-of-way. And they were hoping we could try to work to save those trees, to not have to, to get rid of those. That's one of the main reasons they liked those buffers. That's when they purchased it, they were there, obviously didn't understand that they were in the right-of-way. And so, hopefully, Dick, I don't know, with your discussion with, with some of that stuff with utilities and meeting over there, you know, I don't want the utilities to pull them out either, but if there's any way that we can save those trees, even though they're in our right-of-way, that we can be able to build at the construction, I know they stopped and talked to CDI and told them their concerns, but it's basically the, sort of a small area of the whole, you know, 1.5 miles there, and if there's a way that we can save those, that I think would be very beneficial for them.
It'll probably deal a lot with clear zones and issues like that, but we'll see. I'll, I'll make sure they...
I guess the communication is what they were concerned about too. If there's a, if there's a discussion out there with that and discussion with that, I know they would like to be involved in that. You know, we don't have to, but I think it's the right thing to do. At least get them involved in understanding what's going on.
Okay.
Do, everything that's in our right-of-way, do, are there easements for those?
No.
Nothing?
Well, the ITC may be. I don't have the answer. In fact, Kerry's meeting with them today. And BMU probably... Well, I hate to say.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask, if issues do arise like that, such that what we've dealt with with 34th, if someone could just let me know if there is something you need me to do, the sooner the better, and I've expressed that to Kerry. But you, you are all the ones out in the field having these conversations, so if you feel like you do need easements or agreements drawn up, the sooner I know, the sooner I can get them done for you.
Right now, no right-of-way, no easements on our behalf. But the fence thing, and most of that's cropland, and the only thing would be that it's probably not necessary. We're not, I'm not interested in fencing off cropland, but especially at our expense. But the other thing is though, that you need to be aware of, if you do a lot of hunting, and there's places in the country that the farm fields really move into the right-of-way sometimes. And if we need some way of protecting that, it's something to consider. But Kerry will be presenting that hopefully on the 21st. He's 70% done with the engineering plans and, and hopes to be here the 21st with a presentation on that. Okay, and I had one complaint, and if you get any complaints about the use of... No, let's see, I'm 459. What is that? The north-south one? 475, yeah, 475. I called Rick and he, and there's only one contractor out there, and so he went and visited him. I'm, I told the township person, Mark, that when he does get, if he gets a call, he'll be the first one, is to ask them for the name on the truck, just to make sure it is somebody on that, and I haven't heard a thing back, whether it could have been somebody else's truck that just happens to be going down that road. And so, we need to enforce that and identify the people that are violating it, so we can be good neighbors there with those people on that. And then, Commissioner Miller knows quite a bit about, more about this, but I got a phone call from Troy Johnson. And you were at a meeting that I never knew existed about, I always learn something in this job, is that road agreements on Western Avenue, the SDSU's building an animal building, animal science building. And the township is very concerned about having a road agreement, not only during construction, but long-term, because there's going to be classrooms and everything. You know, it's a little burden for them. Well, first thing I asked Bob was, "Well, geez, how do they get a conditional use permit without a road agreement?" 1997, states exempt. And, but they, as it turned out, one of the people doing construction did sign a road agreement for the construction phase. And I don't know whether we should talk to SDSU, the president, it was just what the college that was affected, is that, correct me. You, you were at this meeting and it was the College of Agriculture that was represented. Maybe we need to go one step up, maybe something to consider, this is, has to be happening somewhere else in the state, where the state is building something that puts a burden on townships. Maybe we'd want to come as a group and write a letter, not saying, I mean, just think about this, to our legislators in that when the state builds something right next to a township road, they should maybe have a road agreement. And that, I'm all for growth of our state and convenience of us, you know, for all the people of South Dakota, but got to throw all the extra expense onto one township may not be fair. So something for you to think about at this time, but whether we would want to pursue, and I'm willing to visit with President Cheekwin on behalf of the Commission and see how that goes. But in the meantime, maybe we have to take this legislatively.
Is that just in college area or, because in the DOT does a project, they enter agreements with the townships or county?
The department must be state buildings, state board of regions?
Yeah, I'll have to find the letter. We've got a letter on file that specifically talks about SDSU and their, like, their livestock permitting.
But when I was at that meeting, I, I asked the question, I think it was probably Commissioners Falcon Larson and I that were at that meeting. And I, I said, you know, "When you build this," because Troy had talked to me long, long ago about, he was concerned, and I said, "When you build this, we're hoping that you will be good neighbors and enter into a road agreement." "Oh, yes, 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 we'll..." But then the powers that be that went to that meeting said that they couldn't and that they should go to the county. Well, that isn't exactly the right answer, so, you know, and I, I said, I told Troy that I would be happy to talk to Dean Dunn and see where we can go from here.
Okay, that'd be the place to start. I just got the impression in my conversation, Dean Dunn had already next the...
I don't, I guess I didn't get that impression. He wasn't the one that was at that meeting.
How about, we'll let you start with that, and then we'll go, keep working our way up. But I just think eventually this may take some legislative pushing, but we'll see. Hopefully, we get it resolved before that. That's it on my part, and, oh, I want to thank you. I, the burn ban, I was just going nuts on this and Bob got sick of me calling. And I called him to say, "Well, I'm not going to be at that Tuesday fire meeting, but they could discuss it." And that time, Bob was told at the beginning of the meeting, "No." And, but I said, "Well, you guys got to fight these fires, so I'm not going to get into your business." And then, after our meeting, Commissioner Jensen knew that there was going to be here today. And I, during the night, I woke up, I said, "Well, it needs to happen Tuesday. It needs to happen today." And, and I appreciate you guys getting together Friday. I was out of town, that you could come together and put that burn ban in. And I think Commissioner Krogman said that, Commissioner Jensen mentioned that they, they know it's Tuesday. We're going to have more fires. And be honest with you, I had some fencing to do on my land quite a ways out, and I had tall grass by it. I, I did it by, I walked out with a bag full of fencing supplies because I was afraid to have my four-wheeler. So I do appreciate y'all getting together and putting that, I think that was a safe and prudent thing to do. And hopefully, we return green up and return to normal, but thank, thank you. Okay, if I don't hear of anything else from anybody, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Moved, second? Second, all favor? All right, thanks.